Call the regular Montague City Council meeting to order. If we could do a roll call, please.
Ken Mahoney.
Here.
Lisa Keel.
Present.
Susan Newhop.
Present.
Al Hires.
Yes.
Laurel LaGuire.
Yes.
Paul Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Lowman.
Here. Invite the audience to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, let me remind you that Monday is Memorial Day, so if we could have a moment of silence before our Plead or Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have been given an agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add to the agenda, please. We could add a vote for the operating hours of the social district for weekends during the summer.
That will become 7A, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
Any other additions or corrections? We could have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition, then?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda.
You said 7A.
I'm sorry?
You said 7A.
7A, good. Number five on the agenda is public comment about any agenda items. And there are some agenda items on the back also, some work sessions. So if you'd like to make any comments about those, please limit your comments to three minutes, let me know, and please use the microphone. Okay? Number six, approve of consent at agenda items. Questions or motion?
I move that we approve all communications and regular bills on the amount of $236,635.07 with 225 to others.
Support.
Any discussion or questions? If you spend any money, roll call, please.
Councilwoman LaGuire.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhop.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Lowman.
Yes. Number 7A, Jeff, do you want to talk about this?
I will. Turn on my mic here. Yes, this recommendation discussion that happened at the Downtown Development Authority last week, been a couple requests from three of the participating businesses to amend the social district hours. The original idea was to amend the hours related to events, and then they also realized, as well as weekends, they realized that all of the events are happening on the weekends. So it was to simply amend the hours during the weekends, so revising hours to allow for 12:00 PM opening, so at noon on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Currently, social district hours are 5:00 to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, so we would just update for those three days if the council would like to move that forward. Again, it's coming from the DVA as a recommendation. On the administrative part of things, if the council does approve, then I have to submit a revised plan to the state. That might take a couple weeks for them to respond, but that can be through electronic communication. They don't have to submit the entire plan, just that revised section. I don't know if Mayor Lowman or Councilwoman LaGuire, who also serve on DVA, think, comments or?
Yeah, I think that covers most of it. Some of it was that, you know, we've got a lot of people that come to visit our area. The majority of them are on the weekends and are spending the entire day, and so kind of starting that not until 5:00 when the business actually opens, usually around 11:00 or noon, they thought was going to be more confusing and cause more issues than if they could pretty much open when the business opens or start serving alcohol at noon, and then it would just cover special events that are happening on the weekends as well.
Questions or comments or a motion?
I'm trying to clarify, because on here it says 6:00 to 11:00, and up there it says 5:00 to 10:00, and we want to open until 12:00. So we're trying to go from 12:00 until 10:00?
12:00 until 10:00.
12:00 to 10:00?
Yep. So it would just, the end time would remain the same in the evening, so that's consistent, 10:00. It's just the opening on those three days at noon until 12:00.
And it'd just be the weekends that we'd open?
Just the weekends, yep. And I did discuss this with Chief Johnson, said that he felt that that would be okay, just for the weekends, as long as the ending time remained at 10:00.
Well, and I'm just wondering, she just says 11:00, is that only for one park or something?
That is just for the parks, yeah. That's the park rules.
Oh, that's a separate thing?
Separate thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we approve new hours for the social district to allow for the social district to open at noon on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Any comments or questions?
I just wonder with the difference in the days, if we could look at maybe having a sign added to our signs that are kind of marking the borders that say weekdays are this and weekends are this, might help clarify things.
Yes, in fact, we've been waiting for the new signs, and we haven't got them, so we might be able to amend them. They have.
Or they're. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? We should do roll call, please.
Councilwoman Newhop.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGuire.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz.
No.
Mayor Lowman.
Yes. Number eight on the agenda is public comment. This is open public comment. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes. If you'd like to make any comments, let me know, and please come up and use the microphone. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Charles Dixon, 7495 Durham Road.
Thank you, Charles.
It's about the parade. It's taking thousands of dollars away from businesses not having it. People are looking forward to parade every year. Tourists comes in for that day only to see the parade, and I've been in it for a couple years, and I know some drivers get stupid under. But shouldn't hold that against everybody. There's a truck behind me last year, we're doing half a block burnouts, and Whitehall went sideways, and then I, another guy cut in line at NAPA, and we're doing crazy burnouts. That should not affect everybody. People enjoyed the print. They liked the burnouts. Long as they're not crazy, I don't see nothing wrong with them. I guess that's about it. And on the Whitehall news site, the most comments on it, people want the parade. I know a lot of businesses is not sponsoring it this year because of no parade, and I know a lot of businesses I've talked to said that is the busiest day of all year, the parade day, so.
Very good. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number nine, Jeff, city manager update.
Okay. Just a couple updates for you this evening, because we will be talking about a lot of the budget items later on in the work session. Charter amendment process, so just to kind of review where we are with that. So this is to amend the mayoral term from two to four years. So we submitted the letter and draft resolution to the Attorney General's Office. We move forward with Resolution 2024-02. Essentially, we're waiting at this point. Attorney General's Office has come back to the city, asked to review the original resolution, which then extended the elections from odd to even year elections, because that's part of this process. So he's reviewing that before he provides comments back. So once we receive those comments back, then the city staff and the attorney will prepare a resolution for formal council approval, and we'll do a public hearing at that time. So just to give you an update where that is, mentioned in a couple of my notes up to council, National Arts Society of Montague helped with tree planting a couple weeks ago, 82 trees planted in a half day. Pretty amazing that, all the work that they did, so we hit all four schools, so high school, middle school, the MAC, and the elementary school. So a couple pictures from that project, great group of students to work with. And then the other item, electronic waste recycling was this past weekend. This is a partnership with the city, Goodwill, and the Climate Action Council. Climate Action Council always helps to support with volunteer labor that day. So just an estimate on what was collected. A little bit blurring here. Approximately 43 TVs, 15 computer towers, 12 printers, 25 laptops, 30 phones, 11 tablets, two pallet boxes full of small appliances, 15 pounds of batteries, about a gallon's worth of printer cartridges, bucket of light bulbs, two car batteries, and 20 pounds of tool batteries. So all within two hours for that event. So this was the first year that we hosted a spring event. Usually, we do it end of summer. I don't know if you can see in the boxes, five of the eight boxes were filled with large screen TVs, like flat screen TVs. So obviously disposable item. So those were the three updates that I had this evening.
Is that kind of being a regularly regular thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the nice thing about the kind of a partnership project, Goodwill brings the trucks, they bring all the equipment, they then have a certified sorting facility and a work program. They try to recommission items, what they can't recommission, they actually scrap out, take valuable metals out. So they do the whole program for us at no cost, so.
Nice.
That's really a very strong partnership.
Is there any questions for Jeff? Have trails open?
Almost.
Usable, maybe?
Yes, usable. They are, I think 90% of it's open, they're still waiting to formally open, because they had to re-core the pad down by doweling. So they're re-coring that.
Anything else for Jeff? Number 10, message from, communication from myself and council member.
Oh, good, thank you.
You had passed out to you the correspondence from me to Jeff regarding City Kitty, we call it City Kitty Rescue, our trap new to return kitty rescue, hand-friendly cat, everything in Montague for 2023. And it speaks for itself, we were really happy. We're happiest when we can actually look at the source of the growth of cats in Montague, and it's the kittens, and we were able to get nine of them this year, get them into foster homes and on their way to inside long-term homes. So this is for you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. And thank you, thank you so much, from me and from all of the people around Montague who have been impacted by these cats. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa? Phil? Ken?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you, Tom, and Jeff, for your idea of a mirror at the top of the hill, where I live up Goodrich Street. That makes it a lot easier to get on that road without getting hit, especially in the summer now, more and more traffic comes down that hill, up that hill, and it's just a lot easier to see over the garden rail. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm upset, thank you.
Okay. And I have nothing, other than, again, remind you that Monday is Memorial Day. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll have a short three-minute break, and then we'll go into our work session.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three-minute break. And call the work session to order. Number 2A, Jeff?
Okay, 2A, city park rules, no smoking. So this is coming out of some complaints by residents. The focus has been a little bit, literally feels both in Montague and Whitehall. Even though it's not part of our park rules, it is part of state law. It's actually part of the public health code. This was all started in 2009, if you remember, all the changes for indoor, smoke-free environments. They've made updates on that, so it's now part of the existing compiled law. I did a drop on your desk in front of you, because it is through the Health Department. Counties can then adopt resolutions to then basically take that law and utilize it for recreation areas. The issue in doing that is that then you have to have the Health Department do the enforcement of those laws. So that means if there is a scenario, whether it's at Cullen Field or another park, if we did not want to see smoking there, you have to call the Health Department, file a complaint. There's also an online file complaint form, you can see where that goes. Within the law itself, and this is pretty small, but I'll just read the one section for you, so they include language in there that then allows local municipalities to adopt either local ordinance or to update their park rules. So, and this is in that first one, "An individual shall not smoke in a public place or at a meeting of a public body and a state or local government agency, or the person who owns, operates, manages, or is in control of a public place, shall make a reasonable effort to prohibit individuals from smoking in a public place." So this is all driven by public place definition within state law, which basically means any area within a local municipality that would not be considered a right-of-way. So right-of-way is then encapsulated for traffic code, but then it's also encapsulated, they actually captured it for the Marijuana Act, that becomes a public place, public parking areas, et cetera. Traditionally, it's been viewed as it has to be a given parcel, so any of the city's parks are a given parcel, so you can reasonably enforce this through local ordinance or for updated rules. This is just a screenshot, this is from the Department of Health, and I think it's almost identical to what's here. This is for, was actually published by Clinton Gresh at Montcalm, but it's the identical language found on the state site. If we look at the city's current operation and procedural policy, it includes park rules. So according to city ordinance, under that chapter, I can update those park rules, but I have to do it under the consent of the council. So traditionally, again, how this is done is to have, what we're going to do for updated rules, and then council consents. Doesn't even have to be a formal motion. In the work session this evening, if the council has consensus that they would like the park rules to change, then I will change the park rules. Unfortunately, it's at the bottom. I'll just tweak it a little bit, and it's in red. So my recommended change, if the council would like to move in that direction, is no smoking, vaping, or tobacco use allowed. So that's added to the city's park rules. As you can see, for the one up above, we do have one. This is also county and state law, pets must be leashed at all times, and we added police cleanup after your pets. And then talk with the Health Department about including language at Maple Beach. Due to public health concerns, no dogs are allowed in Maple Beach or Maple Grove Park, at the pavilion, or on the beach. So this was because the city has a swimming beach designated at that location, so. That is a popular area for dogs to run. Then the other part of this, and then we can kind of, since this work session, kind of talk through that, is if the council were then to approve or recommend for an update in those rules, is the next step really would be to establish fees or fines for violation of park rules, which the city has not had usually, and we would still use it as an educational piece. So as part of that, you have to have signage at the parks in order to do enforcement. So establish fees or fines for violation of park rules. This can be done as part of the budget process, as part of the annual fee schedule, and then every year it's reviewed, if you want to see that happen. Or you can actually update Parks and Recreation Ordinance, Chapter 50, to include language regarding violation of park rules. This makes it more legally binding in that, and actually makes it a civil infraction, because all violations of civil code becomes a civil infraction. So then it goes by to 50, 100, 250, as you kind of progress for first ticket, second, third, repeating, et cetera. So let's jump to there first.
Jeff, can you talk about what signage and where you might place the signs?
So currently, at Maple Grove, there's actually an old Wood Robert sign that has the rules that are posted there. At some of the other parks, it's a small aluminum sign that has the same rules listed there. Obviously, the other parks, we don't have this language related to Maple Grove, but it outlines those at each of the parks, so Metbury, Maple Beach. I think that's the two that we have posted. So the other one would be the Cullen Field area, can be on the building, can be on the gate, it just has to be posted at one location within that property. So it can be posted at any park.
Ken, how would we go about enforcing this?
Well, we would go about first through just kind of saying, we would receive a complaint, try to find the individual, police department would make contact. In most cases, especially for the last rule, if the council is looking to go in that direction, somebody is not smoking and running, they're staying there for an event or an activity, et cetera. So you'd more likely have an opportunity to educate them on the park rules and point out the signage before you ever went to the actual enforcement of fines, fees, or a civil infraction.
And what is included in the parks? You've talked about the two, is it like behind the post office?
Yeah, so let me think, so it'd be, well, the city has three designated charter parks, Metbury Park, Maple Beach, and Lakefront Park. So those are charter parks. The other parks are Watermelon Creek Park, the Wetland Reserve Park, basically the bike trail area going towards the river, Coon Creek Nature Preserve, Cullen Field. Steve or Scott, am I missing any?
Alan's Park?
Alan's, yep, thank you, Tom.
What's the one behind post office called? Is that called?
Watermelon Creek Park.
I don't have any other questions. Questions or comments? Why the sudden concern? Has there been an incident?
There was an incident related at Little League Field, and it's my understanding that actually police were called to that incident, because it got a heated conversation between two adults.
There's actually been, since I talked to you last, there's been a couple more, and this, remember I told you I was supposed to call you about sudden? This is it. We, the Little League contacted me and asked if, what they, if they could put up signs, and when after I talked to Jeff, of course, they can't put up signs. It's, they've had some issues at both Montague and Whitehall. Had an incident at Whitehall where it got a little tense, and then there was another incident last week where somebody asked someone to put out their cigarette or else move away from the other people, and again, it got a little bit out of hand, and fortunately, a couple other guys got in the middle of it. Calm people down. The Little League is hoping that by putting up signs, that'll take care of the problem and the police don't have to come. But it is, it is an issue. It has, it was an issue of the Cullen Field, and I, I don't, I think, the one guy that keeps pushing it does not understand the law, and I tried to talk to him myself a little bit, and decided to just keep it up, because he's not a listener, and he thinks he is above the law, and the law is for everybody else, I guess, but hopefully this takes care of it. And I don't think people should have to sit at a Little League game and, I mean, we don't sit in stadiums anymore, and we don't sit in offices anymore, or company buildings, or anything else, and have to smell somebody else's smoke, so.
Not for him alone.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I got a couple thoughts. If this is a single incident and one crappy guy, I am really not in favor of overhauling our rules, which he doesn't feel he ought to abide by anyway, and which now requires getting authorities involved. And you know, we're getting pretty intolerant of people, so I personally, I don't smoke, I don't like it, I don't want to sit next to somebody who does, but it's legal, and they're outside, for goodness sakes.
No, it's not. It is, it is not legal.
Well, my understanding is it's not. It's not legal until we put this in place, correct?
It is illegal, but the Health Department's not going to enforce it. Right now, it's up to the Health Department to come, if we complain to the Health Department and say, Mr. Jones is, is smoking at the Little League games in violation of the law, they don't have anybody to send to enforce it.
Right, okay. So again, we're not going to have it enforced at the point of fiery discussion at the game. This is going to happen, I presume, later at his house or whatever. But I just wonder, I mean, the Little League is a closed group, they know who all the players are, they know the families. Are they sending anything to the families to say, this is a problem, please do not smoke?
They, they have tried that, but they have tried to talk to people, but the problem is, there is no way to enforce it. It, the city needs to pass the ordinance in order to be able to have something that is enforceable.
For one crappy guy?
Well, it's not just one guy. The one guy happens to be a repeat person, but it's, it's not the same person who's smoking all the time. There's multiple people who are smoking.
Jeff, if we change the ordinance or procedure, how long does it take for that to go into effect?
Well, this, so to change the park rules, again, it's just consensus of the council, because I would, it's up to the city management to change the rules under the consent of the council. If you went to the next step, establishing fees and fines for violation of park rules, then that would be at the budget process, so about 30 days from today. If you change the ordinance, it's 10 days after the ordinance has passed, or after it's published.
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 What would happen is the police would just show up during a game and not true?
They could, they couldn't do anything about it, because they don't have enforcement authority.
Right.
That's through the Health Department.
So it's, to clarify for me, it sounds like it's illegal in Michigan to smoke around other people, or in public, or, I mean, there already is a law there.
Correct.
We just don't have signs that state that.
Correct.
And if we had signs that stated it, the police could come and say, sign, fine.
We could not find that.
If I said civil infraction.
That's if we take the next, next steps. So right now, what we would have to do is, even if we had a sign, we have to cite the state code, which is the public health code, and that section, and then that complaint is then filed with, I mean, the police department could file that then with the Health Department, but no other enforcement action can take place.
So you've kind of been updating ordinances, this isn't just part of your process to update ordinances and things, this is something?
No, this is something separate.
So what do you, what do you think we should do? What's your recommendation on?
I think the easiest thing is to just update the rules, and then you can decide the other enforcement activities. So you want to do that through fines and fees, or through an actual ordinance code violation. Ordinance code, obviously. Ordinance code, obviously, is more stringent. It also has first, second, third offense, and then it can be go to court. So all those items are entailed as well.
Isn't the reason we made things a civil infraction though because they're easier to enforce, you don't have to go through that process of going to the court?
Correct.
So wouldn't this kind of fall under that too?
It would. So that the, the individual who gets the ticket can always fight it. That's their free to go through the court system.
It's unfortunate that this nonsense is happening in front of our children. Not exactly setting a good example. Any other comments? So Jeff is looking for some recommendations. I'll start down there, Laura, with your thoughts.
Yeah, I think at least, at least posting that, it makes people think twice, or at least gives other people to say, hey, it is posted at this location, right? So whether we take the next step or finding or whatever, I think at least putting the verbiage up is a good direction to start.
Ken?
I agree with Laura. You know, signage will make a big difference if most people will pay attention to the sign.
Ben?
We need to make a move. I'm not, that's as good as any. Well, I think we need to start gently and go from there.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep, I think, and I think that's what Little League's looking for. They're just looking for something where their officers could walk to somebody in the crowd and say, hey, look, the city has adopted this, it is illegal, just please comply, and there won't be any problems.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we're putting the sign up, but we're not doing any, what's the word, Jeff?
Not doing that, the next steps.
No fine, nothing, is that correct?
At this, at this point.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that what you need?
That's exactly what I need.
All right, very good. To be?
To be St. Peters by the lake use agreement. So this has gone through Planning Commission because it is related to use of a building. Coming before that council because even though it was approved by the Planning Commission as far as zoning, their, their request to put a parking area, parking location on the street is within public property, within the public right of way. So this is possible, but it has to be through a use agreement. So consider the private improvement and a street right of way. So as reference here, so here's church here, main parking lot, Old Channel Trail, Mead Street. This is largely kind of a compacted dirt sand area where they also did their chicken barbecue for several years. So they're using that as additional parking. So the use agreement actually would allow them to improve that area, to pave it as a designated parking location. By going through the use agreement, the city does not give up any of its rights to utilize that right of way, meaning for public use. So if at some point in the future, the road widens, there needs to be a water line put in there, whatever, then this agreement then protects the city. There's also protection against liability if they decide they're not going to plow that area, somebody slips on ice, falls, we're protected against liability through this agreement as well. So there's kind of a couple different components. The, the site plan itself, again, went through Planning Commission as far as location. I included the minutes from the Planning Commission in there just for your reference and review. I will read the language in here. So Herb moved to recommend that the city council, through the request by St. James Episcopal Church, to pave a portion of the Mead Street right of way adjacent to their facility, with the condition that St. Peters formalized stormwater management measures with city staff and include design components within the use agreement between St. Peters and the city. Support by Coleman, all ayes, no nays. So this agreement does not include those final components that Planning Commission requested the stormwater management and the design components because we're in work session. So if council wants to see this move forward, we'll finalize those with staff. I know that the police chief and the DPW superintendent have also been talked to about this, they are fine with it, we just need to finalize some of those components. So again, kind of work session just to walk through the main components. This is the, on the first page there, all Section 2 is actually the agreement language, and then Section 3 is miscellaneous. So again, this talks about the city retaining all property rights to the street right of way. So if there are any issues that we need to address, we always can.
Questions or comments?
They have been used in this parking for some time already.
Yeah, I think it can be moved up, we need to move it up to an agenda item next meeting. Is that, is that a good idea?
Everybody in agreement?
Six eleven P M.
I think so, dude.
Correct.
Favorite subject, budget.
I don't like budget. I'll just give you a little warm-up for our next meeting, first meeting in June. Today, I want to highlight kind of the street funds because we do have a lot of moving parts within street funds, and there are some large numbers to deal with. We will talk about this again at the budget work session on June 3rd, but to kind of give you an intro to this, and then if we have time and if you're not sick of hearing me talk about, I've got, talk about parks just a little bit, too. So I threw that in there. So street fund highlights, city does have two federal grants that were currently, were already funded. We are kind of moving these projects forward, but all of the work activity is actually going to hit in the next fiscal year. So the first one, the Cook Street project, we actually received the funds and originally had it in the current year budget, but because of timing, it's going to happen in the next year, so it'll just be moved to that next year. So that 346,000 gets moved to 2024, 25. And then we will also receive the Wilcox Street funds, 168,365. So these are just the grant funds, and then the city has components to those as well. State revenue will go up a little bit for major streets, from about 345 to 352, and then local streets from 124,500 to 127,112. So a little bit of movement, that's our state allocation based on major and local roads. As far as appropriation, highlights, so there's the Cook Street project, expected to start in the second week of June. We, I don't think we've got the final schedule yet, but still kind of that timeline. So total project cost for this next year would be 462,475, and there's that 346,500, that's actually grant funds for that project. So the, the city's portion of that is we do still have some engineering costs, as well as construction match to make up that project. And then the same for Wilcox Street, sometime after Memorial Day here, total project cost for this next year, about 260,000, 261,000, and again, 168,000 in match. So both those happening pretty quickly here. In fact, they'll probably start within this fiscal year, but we won't see the financial impacts until the next fiscal year. So those are kind of pushing forward, so those are some big numbers. The other kind of major item that we're looking at is chip and seal projects on Cook, Ferry, and Water, and I'll jump to a map here in a second to look at all the chip and seal projects. Also under major streets is the Old Channel Trail pedestrian bridge and the Wilcox Street project. Those two projects as well are budgeted for this year, getting moved to next year. So the pedestrian bridge, we were waiting on a permit, which we still do not have. And then the Wilcox Street sidewalk project, obviously waiting for the street to get done before we can do the sidewalks. So those are two bump forwards. Within local streets, chip and seal, further the map, which I will in a second here, 102,000. This is multiple neighborhoods that we'll be looking at. Also in local, we will, looking at a couple of sidewalk projects, Sheridan Street sidewalk project, hopefully we'll do this year, still on the calendar, and he has said that he will get it done. And then the Mead Street sidewalk, I have a couple photos of those areas. And then the last item in streets is the storm grain cleaning. This is basically to rent equipment so that we can go to all the storm grains and clean those out, because that's been several years of getting to all the storm grains within the city. So 13,500 for that. I threw one item out here in general fund, chip and sealed Cemetery Road, because we're talking chip and seal, kind of roads, but it actually hits general fund, 11,738 an estimate for that project. If we jump forward to the map, does that mean I'm out of time? Major Streets is in the light blue here. So we're looking at doing Ferry Street from Dowling North to Hunt. So basically, this side of downtown, after that project occurs, that's when we would also reline the one side in front of City Hall for the angle parking to get additional. DDA has agreed to weigh in for some of the curb work on the other side of the street in front of Mr. Mu Ma's building. And once that's complete, then the other part of the parking, that's parallel on that side would happen, but that project would occur. Also, kind of from the light going down towards the boat launch on Water Street, chip and seal there, and then a long section on Cook all the way from Dowling, basically all the way to Old Channel Trail. So you're probably thinking, well, that's a pretty new road, why are we sealing it now? Well, the intent is you seal it, you protect that asphalt even as a newer road. So do those major roads, and then everything you see in pink are these small neighborhood roads. These would all be chip and seal for the upcoming year. Looking for a little input from council because they are, contractors are getting anxious on chip and seal because they're trying to figure out their schedules because they travel throughout the state. They want to get that scheduled, even though we're not adopting budget till next month. If we kind of get the nod, I know we have the funds in there, at least let them get it scheduled, and it does not hit our books till next year. So I guess as an initial item to those. For chip and seals, sound like agreeable projects, I can jump back to numbers. So for all the majors, 116,000, so that's Cook, Ferry, and Water, and then for local, 102,000. So that's related to all of these street miles.
So it kind of acts like a preventative maintenance for longer?
Yep. So there's a few of them that will actually give us some extended years. We know that we'll eventually have to redo them. A lot of them are kind of give that preventative, preventative maintenance for us.
So?
I think we should go forward with that. If the money's in the budget and you're not concerned about it, I would say yes.
Schedule.
Okay. The other item, this is the sidewalks, a little blurry on top here. This whole Keystone feature makes it interesting. So this is the Wilcox Street project, our sidewalk projects again. So this project itself, the street project will happen pretty quickly, or start pretty quickly here. Once they get done with that and we get engineering sign off, then we will work on the sidewalk project. This would be the connector sidewalk from Old Channel all the way to Cook. Again, that's the same project that was on the book for our current fiscal year, just not getting the project timing done, so we just bumped that to next year. The other, that small project that I talked about, hopefully hits this year, is a small section of Sheridan. So this is Williams Street here, and then Hancock, so a little connector section here. This is the new sidewalk on Hancock from a couple years ago, and then it connects with the existing sidewalk on Sheridan.
Doing something to Ferry Street. What happened with our discussion about changing part of Ferry to one way and actually changing the, how things are out here?
So that's, we'll do the line striping out front here as part of this project after we chip and seal.
So we're going to do what we talked about then?
Yep, the other end where we talked about one way, we'll look at that when we actually do the road. That whole section probably has to be ground up, so melon fill and then repave, because there's all the cuts across there. We're kind of delaying that just because, we don't have to wait for the Ferry Street project anymore, but just because of the project funds, makes more economic sense to do all of the chip and seal, do kind of the maintenance, and then we can come back and then look at that road for next year.
So that, that, or south of Dowling is not included in this project?
Correct, yep. Because when Scott and I were out there, we even talked about, we'll probably in doing that, want to look at some of the curbs as well, redesign those, especially if it's changed to one way to choke it down, and then also down near Harbor Point to change that a little bit, so.
And we're, are we still in discussions about moving the market?
Yeah, that, I think that will probably come through the DDA, so we'll look at the cost to do that. Also want to make sure that that parking diagram works out for actually shifting, that we are gaining spots and not just shifting the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Are we throwing to parking by the Farmers' Market, parking to improve?
Yes.
Parking down there?
Yep.
Any questions about the maps or the roads that were signed off, Jeff proposed?
Want to take another small bite with parks here, or you want to wait till next? All right, so a lot of this is coming out of Parks and Recreation Committee. A lot of the same stuff is happening because of timing this year, kind of wrapping up budget numbers, we're shifting stuff to next year, and also some of the permit work, which did not get completed. So the very first one, Maple Grove, so we had the shoreline project in the current fiscal year appropriation of just 100, just over 243,000. So still waiting on that permit. I saw, just saw an email today, actually, from the Army Corps that they're looking for some additional information before they can move that forward. So extra fingers will get the permit, and then we can actually do it this next year. Medbury Park bathroom door, so out by the lake, this has kind of been on and off all of our budgets for the last three years, depending on what's going on. So we're sticking it again, and for this upcoming year, $8,500. Maple Grove playground replacement, 192,000. So Parks and Recreation Committee kind of threw this out, if this project wasn't going to happen this current fiscal year, could we move those, utilize those funds maybe for doing the playground? We could have, but also the timing to get that complete, and then the current fiscal year just did not happen. So I have it in yellow because if we have available funds, it's possible we could do both in this next fiscal year. Otherwise, we'll just focus on the shoreline. If it, again, looks like the permit's going to be pushed out, then we'll flip and do the playground. So we'll have an allocation in there. Cullen Field, two items, dog park south of the bike trail. I'll show you a map here in a second as part of that concept design that we've been working on. And dugouts need new roofs, so we actually need multiple small facility roofs, so they'll go out there and just do the roofing on those. It'll be a metal roof this time versus shingles, so we'll make it longer lasting. Let's see here, launch ramp, so both launch ramp and bike trailhead. So parking lot light upgrades, so this next year, if you've driven down to the boat launch, you've probably seen the cone sitting in the middle of the parking lot, and there's some casting covers, so that's for the new lighting. We were waiting to get estimates and made sure we had enough funds to cover those, so that will be this next fiscal year. So got the fish cleaning station done, that's all set, do some new lighting. Do some new lighting this next year. And then also, once Whitehall Products gets moving with the parking lot area back here, to do the lighting upgrades for that parking lot. So a couple of small projects there. As far as the map, so just as references, was that kind of master plan, concept design for the shoreline work at Maple Grove. So that 274,000 is basically from this point, lakeward. So all the work that you see here, including creation of the new beach, the dredging, docks, et cetera. Playground is just the playground component, does not include all the other upland work. So you can see playground equipment and all of the, much needed for safety underneath is an expensive little endeavor. So initial estimate of 192,000. So there's still other components related to that plan, but again, we phase it in and take off chunks as we can. The Cullen Field as far as the dog park, so this is probably one of the most popular requests the city gets is installation of a dog park someplace. As the engineers were working on the draft design concept for this, you can see there's not only some future rework of the parking lot itself, proposed pickleball court area here, but then their best location for a dog park within the city was this little L-shaped triangle. So we got some initial estimates for fencing. We could do that this next year. Subcommittee and my concern was what does this do for the, getting grant funding for the overall project? For this particular one, it doesn't affect the ability to get state funds for the rest of the park. So walking trails, Cullen Field upgrades, connection to the Koon Creek Nature Preserve. So all those can still happen. As these projects roll out, we're also gonna, the subcommittee is going to host public meetings to get input on the kind of the final designs of each of these parks and kind of continue to make improvements. And that fits into our Parks and Recreation Plan that the DNR approves for, then state funding. So it's kind of a working puzzle pieces here. But that's for next year, kind of the proposed projects and activities.
Jeff, has there been any information on the engineering for the boardwalk and the boat launch area?
Yeah, so engineering is now complete. Is working on the permit paperwork and getting the kind of construction estimates together. And then I also received from him, a look at moving that, the ban shell pavilion, because we know we're going to have to replace that. So we've got some concepts to look at for that next time Subcommittee meets.
So is that realistically looking out at least another year or so for the boardwalk to reopen?
Yeah, especially because of permit work.
Questions, thoughts? Go for it.
My last, just question for the council, as we move into the budget work session on June 3rd. Is there particular information or detail that you want to see? That way I can make sure that I have the right materials here, staff can be prepared. I'd like to not bring all of my three ring binders down, but if I can strategically plan. If you want further detail or focus on, more on roads, more on water and sewer, don't even necessarily need to know tonight, but we're kind of finalizing that draft budget next couple of weeks so that we have something very solid for the June 3rd meeting.
I can let you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Jeff, you know what would be helpful? It occurred to me, as you have talked about the parks, we met as a committee, that was a while ago, this length of time that it takes between, we go, I'm going to use the parks as an example, that we stand in the park and we say, this needs to be done and we'd really like to do that. And then we get the go ahead to move ahead and then there is an engineering process and then there's a permitting process and in between all of that, there's a budgeting process. And it all takes a really long period of time and it needs to, I understand that. If you could explain some of that or put together, sort of real simple timeline for expectations so that we have a good idea of what we're looking at down the line, especially in terms of, I get questions from colleagues or from residents about what's going to happen, like the boardwalk. And, you know, we proved it, so I was thinking it would be started on the next month. That would just be really helpful in order to explain to people. Thank you.
Other comments? In the work session number three is a public comment. Again, this is open public comment. If you'd like to make any, please let me know and use the microphone. Let me check comments in three minutes.
8691 Sheridan Street, Kristi Woodwell. I have a little concern about the social district at 12. You know, there's kids going by, people can get drunk pretty fast on the weekend and there's kids going by to go fishing or riding their bikes or walking by. They're, they're going to get ice cream at Lipkus. So, I mean, is that something that you can address again, see how it goes? Instead of maybe kids having to walk by a bunch of drunks on the sidewalk when they're going here and there? And revisit maybe bike paths or bike lanes on Wilcox and Cook or whenever we're doing a road, I would reiterate that it'd be nice if we had a bike lane whenever. And I've said it once or twice. And I'd like to see if you're going to rearrange or whatever, the market and so on, and make the road one way or try and figure out different parking in that section and the corner there that Dean Weaver had. And you have to maybe move the bike or the ban shell. If it was a big old plan where the bike, the ban shell was on Dean Weaver's property or the city's now, but what you were talking about, and make some parking, you know, available so that that would work out. Because there's going to be, need more parking at the ban, or the boat launch. And, you know, the ban shell is crowded now when the big bands are there, whatever. So I would think that could be a whole, whole reconfiguration. Maybe all of it should be included. And I don't know if anybody ever used that boardwalk to begin with, and it seems like a waste of money to fix it. And in order to go use that boardwalk, you probably have to have a boat launch to, if you're going to park there and then go on that boardwalk. I thought it was a waste of money once, the first time they built that boardwalk. And like I said, I'm not sure anybody uses it. And where do they have to park to go use it? So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Anybody else?
Lisa Reed, 8679 Sheridan Street. I just heard the dog park. 75,000 for a dog park? Is that just for fence, to fence an area?
Yep.
Because I hope you're not doing too much for dogs. They don't really care.
Yeah, I can address that real quick. So it's not only the fencing, but there is some required kind of entry pads and sidewalks to do that connection there. So there's some concrete, hard surface work.
Which makes me sad to see all the concrete in parking lots if you're putting in. I know they have to be, but do you have to concrete everything? And also, while I'm here, when you talk about lighting, I hope you just do what's needed because it's really hard. Because when they put up the lightings around the school, that's really quite bright all night long. Almost like too much lights. I understand you need it for some sort of safety, but just please go low. Less is better in my book. I liked your comment about this movie. It's too bad about the man smoking. It's too bad we have to make all these signs for a few people who can't, too bad we couldn't speak with them.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we could entertain a motion to adjourn. Thought you guys almost wanted to stay. We have a motion and a seps support. Is it, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.